Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Trustees Meeting Ames Community College, August 11, 2021. I will call them if you look for them. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, I need a motion to approve the agenda, gentlemen and ladies.
I so move.
Motion, you have a second? I'm sorry?
Second.
We have a second?
Whoops.
All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion carried, the agenda is approved. The motion to approve the consent agenda.
I actually have a comment about it.
Okay.
Appropriate, on the one action item, about the election of the president for the board.
Okay.
I don't think one of the strikeouts makes any sense. The board president shall be originally said limited to one term of two years. Now it says that we live to two, two term, two years.
Would you like to move that to an action item so we can discuss it?
I would so move.
Okay, we have a motion to move, item B, policy twelve, board officer elections and responsibilities, to an action item and we'll make that item F. Okay? Now, I would like to, a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
You've got a question.
We're gonna have discussion.
On the action item, we will.
Well, are we gonna move it to an action item or are we gonna move?
That's what I just said. We will move it to an action item and make it item F on action items.
We really haven't had any work session on this item.
We don't need it, but we can have it.
I think.
That's the wish of the board. We can discuss it.
This will be the first, this policy and procedure that's ever been decided without a work session, my note.
Let's move it to an action item and then we can move it to a work session.
Okay.
It's possible, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Sure. Thinking of the time frame, this is a very selfish request on my part because, as you know, I'm gonna have to leave early today. I think we should set aside some meaningful time period for discussion there. Would it make sense to table this action item until next month? I would, I would make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor. We have motion on the floor to move it to an action item F. Dr. Peterson made the motion. Do you want to withdraw your motion?
For what purpose?
To table it for a work session.
Dr. Peterson would like to, or Dr. O'Hare would like to move it to next month.
Okay.
To set it aside to a different meeting.
I will withdraw my motion.
Okay, you withdraw your motion, okay. Would you like to make a motion?
Okay, I would make a motion to table this action item on board officer election and responsibilities until we've had a chance to discuss it in some format. And, you know, thinking we would attempt to be ready to address this decision in September, at the September board meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion to move this item to a meeting future. To set it aside to a meeting future, is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a second?
Is that a meeting future as a work session item or as an action item?
We can do a work session.
Seems most appropriate.
I would amend my, my motion then to say, until we've had a chance to discuss it at a work session.
Okay, you would like, your motion to say that we would like it moved to a meeting future to include a work session.
And I'll second.
Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. And Dr. Peterson, you seconded it?
I seconded.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, now, can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
I would so move, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Okay, motion is carried. Carrie, do you have any questions on this decision? Okay. Public comments, we have any public comments?
Mr. Chairman, there were no public comments.
Okay, thank you. Number six, presentations from guests and representatives to the board, excellent at Ames, Kelly Jackson, please.
Good afternoon, chairman and board trustees. I'm excited to introduce this month's excellence at Ames. As always, we have someone very impressive. It's always hard for me to talk about it because of, this is what we do, why we do. Have you ever wondered what goes on behind the scenes at a radio or TV station? Listen carefully to this next story of success and you'll quickly find out. Adrian Felix graduated in 2014 with an associate's of applied science in communications media, media writing. He is currently the TV radio traffic coordinator for IntraVision Communications in Denver. IntraVision serves the Hispanic community in Denver with four TV and four radio stations. Since he is stationed in Denver, he is joining us via Zoom today and we welcome Adrian Felix.
Hi there, can you all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. My name is Adrian Felix. I, I just first want to thank Kelly for inviting me to do this. I was super excited to, to be able to speak about my experience at Ames because, for me, it really is a story about triumph and, you know, overcoming some of the things and struggles that I had as a teen, as a non-traditional student, and in any way that I could ever give back to the community of Ames, I'm certainly happy to do so. My experience there absolutely changed my life. So just to start off again, my name's Adrian Felix, I'm 30 years old. I attended Ames from 2012 to 2014. My first experience with Ames wasn't actually going to college. When I was in high school, I faced incredible struggles as a student. I had a younger brother who passed away, I felt directionless. I felt hopeless about my educational experience and I was a high school dropout. I dropped out at the age of 17. And right away, I went to Ames to receive my GED. I received it right away after I took the test and that's kind of my first experience and it certainly wasn't the last with Ames Community College. From 17 till about 21, I definitely got the GED experience in the sense that I realized that I needed to further my education in order to get ahead in life. And that said, through that time period, I never really had a sense of direction. I was going from job to job, dead end jobs by, by the way. And when I was 21, I, I decided that I just couldn't do it anymore, that I needed to get something figured out. So having received my GED from Ames, I went to go apply for my associates. And when I first went, you know, they, of course, they always ask, well, what direction are you wanting to go? Is it, you know, accounting, is it nursing? And I had no clue. So I took an aptitude test and it found that maybe the best direction for me would be working in broadcast media. It's so funny because now that I think about that experience, it made perfect sense. When I was in high school, I was a debate student. And so I certainly wasn't scared of having a microphone in my face or being in, in front of a camera. So after I took the aptitude test and it said that this is probably the direction for me, I said, let's do it, let's, let's see what I can do in this area. So I went for communication media, broadcast writing. Ames was transformational for me as a student because it really taught me in the way that I needed as a non-traditional student. And I'll be quite honest, I'm a little bit of a needy student. I require some attention to know it is that I'm doing. But I got that at Ames, it was smaller class sizes. It was also dynamic in the sense that I wasn't just attending some in-person classes, I was also doing online classes. So it kept me entertained, but most of all, it made me put myself in these positions as someone who works in broadcast media that I never saw myself. And I think that that's really the key for so many non-traditional students is that you have to see yourself in those positions in order to succeed. And I think that that was my favorite part of attending Ames was, I got to work a soundboard, I got to work a camera, I got to be a director. I have to give a shout out, I would be remiss if I didn't talk about Jim Crandall, who is a fantastic professor at Ames, he really made the experience enjoyable for me and I think most importantly, he understood how I learned. And so I, it was two years of actually, for the first time in my life, enjoying school. I'll never forget my graduation, it was an honor because I was the first in my family to graduate with anything post-high school, you know, much less the fact that I was a high school dropout. So it was a victory for me to graduate and I'm very, very honored for that experience because not just for the fact that it helped me as a student, but it really gave me the skills that I needed to succeed in broadcast media. Right after I graduated, I worked at a little radio station called 1310 KFK. I'm sure many of you have heard of it, as were in Greeley. I did my intern, internship there, which was required for me to graduate. And then when I was done with my internship, they said, you have all the skills, we'd like to have you onboard as a producer. So it was amazing to me that I had just graduated and I already had my foot in the door in terms of a career that quite honestly, I never thought that I would have. I stayed with 1310 KFK for about five years and I worked in various capacities. I worked as a producer, I worked as a host, I worked as a traffic director and the business manager. And all of the skills that were needed for me to be competent at that job, I learned at Ames. I looked, or I took broadcast media accounting classes, I took production classes. So I knew what I was getting into and I, I learned those skills at Ames. After five years of attending, or of going to 1310 KFK, I was ready to, I guess, fly a little bit. I had, I was born and raised in Greeley and so I was ready to move on and see what else I could do. So I applied at IntraVision Communications, which is where we have Univision Colorado. And I remember I submitted my application and 30 minutes later, I got a call from my now manager who was like, you have experience in this, you have a broadcast degree, we want you in right away. And it was history from there, I'm celebrating my three years next month at IntraVision Communications. I recently received a promotion, two weeks ago, to traffic supervisor. And it's, it's been transformational for me because I never saw myself in these positions, but I know now that I have a pathway to success. And that really started with that first, you know, that first step at Ames Community College. So I will be forever grateful. And I really wanted to close with stating, you know, kind of the obvious, I'm watching this meeting and you're all in masks. This pandemic has really rocked this entire country for well over a year. And I will say that I feel like I survived the pandemic, that my skills were needed. And that, you know, despite losses in media, and I'm sure every media corporation will tell you that, they decided that they couldn't lose me, that they needed my skills in order to survive this pandemic and move forward. And I can't speak enough about how much Ames was a part of that story and how grateful I am. So once again, I want to thank you all for listening to my story, you guys do incredible work. I have nothing but good things to say about my experience at Ames. And I encourage everyone who's thinking about doing it to do it, even when you think that you were like I were thinking, I was thinking that it just wasn't quite possible and it is. So I'm forever grateful to you guys, thank you so much for having me today.
Thank you, Adrian, for being with us today and sharing your story. We're extremely proud of you as well and congratulate you on your success and wish you many more, many more years of success as you move forward. Thank you again for being here with us.
Yes, thank you for having me, have a good meeting.
Thank you. Awesome. Okay, representatives to the board, Student Government Association, Levon, can you answer?
Hello, Chairperson Oxiger, Board of Trustees members and Dr. Rothmer. So I'd like to start by introducing 2021, 22 Student Government Association. I highly recommend everyone in attendance here today do their best to get the, get to know these excellent people more in the future. First is Executive Vice President of Finance, Chelsea Union. Next, we have Vice President of Facilities and Operations, Brittany Grant. We also have Vice President of Public Relations, Stephanie Thompson. Our Vice President of Academic Affairs, Zach McCormick. And our Vice President of Stace, Andrew Caneta. It's an exciting opportunity in itself to be working with other Ames students, but I'm incredibly honored that I get to collaborate closely with a team of community-minded people. And I'm SGA president and I'm very excited about this epic chance to get to serve the students here at Ames. I personally don't care to talk about myself, but because context is the container that the conversation exists in. And I want the board and those in attendance to know the lens through which I see the world, so I'll indulge myself. I'll be 29 in September, on the next board meeting, actually, September 8. I am a daughter of Mexican immigrants and I grew up in the sweet melon capital of the world, Rocky Ford, Colorado. My family found their way to Greeley in 2005 and we've been a part of this community ever since, this is too low. I'm a GED recipient, I'm a non-traditional student, just like Adrian, actually. And I'm immensely grateful for the opportunity to give a voice to others that share these identities. That being said, Ames student leaders have had a real busy summer. We've been training and team building since June and we're ready to get to work across all campuses. Student leaders are helping out with peak registration, we're engaging and connecting with students as they're waiting to see advisors by talking to students and learning more about them and their journeys at Ames. We're also using this time to know, to learn more about incoming students, things like what they're expecting from Ames, what they know about us, what they don't know, and what they have access to. CAP is hosting a mental health and wellness resource fair in September and that will be on Greeley campus. There will be mental health awareness and suicide prevention on all campuses. Look out for Be a Lifesaver, that's a campaign for suicide prevention and mental health awareness. There will be QPR training. And our diversity peer specialists have been working on Latinx Heritage Month. And SGA is very much looking forward to covering Constitution Day this year and getting town halls on the student activities calendar. We want to use our town halls as a jumping off point of pandemic support. We want students to know that Ames is here, we never left and that our primary purpose is to serve students and their communities because student communities are Ames communities. Student leaders are thrilled about the opportunity to socialize on campus again and we're all dedicated to doing so safely. Zoom and mandatory remote-only options have scarred us for life and we're doing everything we can to make sure we're all still COVID compliant in order to keep ourselves and everyone around us safe. Thank you very much for your time, Chair Oxiger, Board of Trustees members and Dr. Rothmer.
Thank you, Levon, next is our Ames Faculty Association, Mr. Mark Moody.
Good afternoon, Chair Oxiger, Board Trustees, Dr. Rothmer. We don't have any accomplishments to say, but I want to say over the summer, our faculty have worked very hard implementing new strategies for the fall semester, especially with using Zoom for remote learning and also to using more open resource textbooks. So we have been doing that a lot, as you see in your packet right there. And we continually learn new methods, we also want to improve our content for delivery, especially keeping some of the remote aspects intact. And we are excited to be back for in-person learning, it's good to see everybody as well too. So we are excited about coming back and for face-to-face learning. And I also want to introduce our new Board Trustee Liaison, Professor Mometa Roy of Economics. We have both collaborated a lot of numerous projects, I would say, in the social science department and she'll be presenting a lot of accomplishments in September. So thank you for your time and I'll host any questions.
Any questions, Mark?
I just, I just want to say it's so nice to see your face.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
I see yours too.
Making it through the pandemic summer.
Absolutely.
It must have been a struggle.
Thanks, Mark.
Not a problem, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, next is our Ames Staff Association, Jen Seedorf.
Good afternoon, Chair Oxiger, Board members and Dr. Rothmer, it's so nice to be here with you in person, I'm so excited. It's a, I have a short and sweet report for you today. Staff, we're just excited to be getting back in person and the staff, the staff association leadership group, we're really excited to work on some of our in-person networking events that we've been doing in the past and some of our community events, so we're, we're really ready to go. So, but today I would also just like to end with a Ripples nomination from our June and July report, which was in your packet. And today I'd like to read a nomination for Rich Murphy. He is building maintenance tech in Facilities and Operations. He was nominated by Mike Mesa, IT Support Specialist. Rich is awesome to work with. He communicates very well when assigned equipment furniture move projects by making sure all involved parties are aware of timeframes and expectations. He is very pleasant to work with and makes sure that all clients' expectations are met. He ensures assigned tasks are completed efficiently and timely. I look forward to working with Rich because I can trust him to do an excellent job. Rich is an asset to the building services team, keep up the great work, Rich. And I really wanted to highlight this one in particular because I feel like a special shout-out should be given to the IT and the facilities departments because they are integral in getting us back on campus. So Brad, Mike, please thank your teams for us and getting us back up and running. That's all I have, I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Jen? Okay.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you.
Okay, next on the agenda is our action items. There are one, two, three, four, five, and I think there's all Dr. Rothmer. So I'm just gonna turn that over to you, sir, and then we'll address them one at a time.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger, members of the board. On behalf of our early childhood department as well as our curriculum committee, as Chair Oxiger said, I have five action items for you and they're all interrelated. I will go them one by one, but wanted to give you a little bit of context of why you're seeing these at this time altogether. So basically, based on a state requirement in trying to streamline and make our early childhood programs across the state more responsive to the needs, they wanted the colleges to align their curriculum together and to make the certificates accessible and quickly achievable so that you could get on into the workforce. And then all of these certificates are laddered together so that you, while you're working, you can continue. So we certainly have some students going full-time, some students going part-time and working. So it provides that flexibility for our learners to proceed through these certificates. So overall, in early childhood, we have four certificates that are laddered and the one action item on here that you'll see is the fourth and final one in that series. So the four are the entry, the assistant teacher, teacher and director. And the one that we're asking for your approval today is for the assistant teacher certificate. And that information is in your packet in terms of somewhere in the issue, which I basically went over for you. And again, it really helps streamline and provides our learners an opportunity to engage in these opportunities. So our administrative recommendation for you is to approve the creation of an early childhood assistant teacher certificate.
Russ, these are programs we have both at, at the college and concurrent, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And concurrent.
And concurrent. My favorite word.
Are there any questions, Russ, on this? Mark has already asked a question, any other questions?
I'd move to be a.
Any discussion?
Item five A, Mr. Chairman.
I second that motion.
No, seven A, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have a motion and I do need a second?
Yes, please.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Both, same sign? Okay, then motion is carried. Take, carry on, Dr. Rothmer.
Thank you. Action item seven B is, our administrative recommendation is to approve the archival of the early childhood education certificate.
Just to make sure, Mr. Chairman and Dr. Rothmer, these last four sort of combine to make a?
Not really. So what we've done is created those four certificates based on the state outlawing a requirement to have a consistent curriculum across the state. So all of the four that I mentioned that we have kind of make up the new early childhood program.
That's what I thought I was saying, okay. Yeah.
So we have a, a motion to approve action item B.
I have motion that we approve, action item seventeen.
Okay, so I'll second it. We have a second.
Could we do them all at once?
Well, yeah, you presented them, yes. I guess you could read through them, I could say yay. I'd rather you present them.
I agree.
Okay.
We have a motion on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carried. All right, item C.
Thank you, sir. So action item seven C is their administrative recommendation is the approval to archive the early childhood teaching beginning certificate.
I would move approval on seven C, Mr. Chairman.
I would second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve action item C, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion is carried.
Action item seven D. Our administrative recommendation is the approval to archive the early childhood great beginnings certificate.
Do we have a motion?
I would so move.
Second. We have a motion as second, all in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Both, same sign? Motion is carried. And item E.
All right, finally, action item seven E. The administrative recommendation is approval to archive the early childhood infant toddler teacher certificate.
Okay, any discussion? They have a motion.
My motion that we approve, action item number seven E.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And we have a second? All in favor, signify by saying aye? Aye. Oppose, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Rothmer.
I'd like to thank our department chair, Christine Weedman, who came today to see if there's any additional questions. She and her team for working with the state. She and her team for working with the state in our curriculum committee to make this happen for us. So thank you.
Who is she?
How many students do we have? How many students we have in this program potentially?
We usually have around 200.
No kidding?
There you go.
Wow.
That's great.
How many of those are concurrent? I scroll.
Concurrent students, I would say are probably around around 25 to 30.
Great, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Moving on to information items. Calendar. Everybody have your calendar in front of you. August 25th, we have a fall in at Fort Leptin Campus. The 30th is fall in at Windsor Campus. And on September 8th, we have our Board of Trustees meeting at the Flight Training Center. And that, just for note, is a joint meeting with the Foundation Board. And then our retreat, September 29th through October 1st, will be held this year. Location to be determined. We're working on a couple of different places for the September 29th and the first part of the 30th, or the 30th, rather. And then October 1st, we will meet at Ed, here at Ed Baby 101. So October 13th to 16th, ACCT Leadership Congress, that's in San Diego. And Trustee Hout, I believe you've signed up for that.
Yeah.
If anybody else that has.
I'm alone wolf.
Yeah, so far.
And we haven't.
I think there's still time, is there not?
What's everybody's feelings on that?
That's that's correct. You still have time to sign up. Currently, ACCT plans to hold that in person. So you still have time. Actually, Early Bird Registration Rates, they continued through the end of August. So I highly recommend, if you change your mind and would like to go, let me know prior to August 1st.
I'd like to go. I will get back to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
The exact dates are, what again?
October 13th through the 16th. And also, your October Board meeting is during that week. So depending on how many trustees decide to go, you might need to reschedule that October meeting.
Okay, so again, if you decide you want to go, try to get in before.
And he might cancel, too.
Yes, you could cancel as well with a late fee, well, a cancellation fee charge.
Okay.
Thank you.
Correspondence. I think we had one correspondence. And if you would indulge me a second here, I'll read that correspondence. I'm gonna start out, Russ, with maybe a little help from you. The HMOC is what? What is the HMOC, do you know?
Holocaust Committee.
The Holocaust Community, okay. All right, so the letter reads, and I quote, "May 16th, 2021, Dear Dr. Bornstein, The HMOC, which is the Holocaust Community, I'm told, is so grateful for the continuing support for the week of observances from the Ames Stat. This year, we had an excellent movie presented at a Saturday night drive-in with popcorn, no less. It was such a delightful innovation, and all of us had a good time chuckling over the shades of our teen years," in quotes. "Dr. Booker presented a most interesting lecture online about the rise of the Third Reich and the horrifying episodes of the violence and mass murders with our sincere thanks Tracy Adams, HMOC of Greeley and Northern Colorado." Nice letter. Next is the Fall Board Retreat Update. Carrie, I'll turn that over to you.
So we do have a location now for September 29th, which will be your reconnection. And that will be held at Maker's Restaurant in their private dining room from 4:30 to 6:30. So that's an update on the times that are in your agenda.
What restaurant?
Maker's, and that's at the Doubletree at Lincoln Park. Downtown.
Yeah.
And I will, I'll send you the address and all pertinent information as we get closer to that date. All these events are also in diligence, so you can check on your calendar and find information as well. So then your full-day retreat on September 30th will be at the Doubletree in the Horace Greeley Boardroom. And that will be from 9 to 4:30, and Dr. Fisher will be facilitating your retreat. And then, as Chair Oxiger reminded you, on October 1st, you'll be in Ed Baby 101 from 9 to 4:30, and that will be a COVID debrief with cabinet members. So that will, that includes all of the activities for your fall retreat.
Say that again.
That's it.
I like it.
Your first thing is just a social, or that's just a social thing?
Uh huh.
Four to six, okay.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. We already talked about Leadership Congress, so we're good there. All right, next is the CEO Presidency Report, and I'll turn that over to you, Dr. Roth.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger. And it is my pleasure when I have opportunities to share with you some of the work that's happening across our different areas. And since you're the chief of some of the leaders and staff of those areas. So the first presentation that I have for you under my report is by Ray Char, who's our Director of High School Programs. And I believe he was here. So if you could come on up to the microphone. In addition, one of the things I placed out at your workspace is this handout called High School Programs Overview. And it has the information that Mr. Char will be sharing with you today. Ray, please, thank you.
I learn from those before me. Good afternoon. My name is Ray Char, Director of High School Programs. Chairperson Oxiger, board, colleagues, and by Zoomies online, how are you all doing this afternoon? Just want to do a quick little introduction. Dr. Rothamer had asked me to do maybe a brief overview of high school programs, some quick grounding definitions, and then certainly, we want to talk about some of the great work that we've been doing in these last couple of years. And so one thing I just want to mention really quickly is we use the term concurrent enrollment as sort of a blanket term. And that's perfectly okay, but it is just a touch more nuanced than that. And so I want to start with the question that I always ask people is, who is paying their tuition? And so when we think about high school students, I think that's the first question that we often ask, is who is paying their tuition? Certainly, there are members of our Ames community that are 16, 17 years old, that are coming to Ames Community College, that are paying out of pocket for their own tuition. But when we think about high school programs, what we're really talking about is a student who is enrolled in some capacity at Ames Community College, but the fiscal responsibility is on the high school to pay for that student's tuition, fees, or any combination thereof. And so I'm sharing with you, after that blanket definition, there's maybe five or six buckets that we may stick that student into to kind of give us a little bit more of that nuanced definition. The first is just simply concurrent enrollment, and that's sort of, again, our generic term that we may use. It is a high school student who is enrolled at a Ames course, maybe on our campus, maybe online, or maybe at their home high school with a qualified credential instructor that Ames has identified as a, as a, somebody who meets our requirements for credentialing requirements. So that's sort of our largest bucket. In that bucket, we have 61 participating high schools, and we had a distinct headcount of somewhere in this 2,700 range this last academic year of students participating in that, in that world. The next, the Early College Academy. Hopefully, you all know, well, just down the street. Depends on if you go through the neighborhood or not. You can get there in about 10 minutes walking, or maybe 15 walking. And that is a fully integrated partnership with District 6. That is a unique campus that Ames Community College is providing full-time instruction in that building. We're providing all of our Ames resources in that building, tutoring services, library services, academic advising, all in that building. Students, again, a part of District 6. We have 350 students that are in that building. Today was first day for many of those students over there. And that's the campus where they can earn their Associate's of Arts degree while they're in their four years of high school there.
Where was that campus at?
So that's at the Early College Academy. It is just, just walking distance down there, right behind where the old Social Security office used to be, right in that parking lot there. Yeah. Wonderful. The next one is a kind of our newer bucket here, is we have pathways in technology, early college, high school. This is a big trend that we're seeing happening just nationwide. IBM introduced this trend in 2014, I think-ish, in New York City. It's sort of made its way into Colorado in the last five or so years. Ames Community College technically is in partnership with four PTEC pathways. Those are a three-legged pathway that is high school partnership, Ames Community College, and industry partners. They're all working together to not only provide an associate's degree in area, but also mentorship, job placement, all of those wonderful things that industry can provide on those things. One of those partnerships is with Frederick High School down in the St. Brain Valley School District, and that is in a biomedical pathway. And then we have three partnerships in District 6, two of them in a construction trades pathway, and one of them in an industrial manufacturing pathway there.
Where are those at?
So the, our biomedical pathway, PTEC program is at St. Brain Valley Frederick, yep. And then all three of the comprehensive high schools here in District 6, Greeley West, Greeley Central, and Jefferson High School, we're also in partnership with them. As of last year, there were 11 PTECs in the state, and Ames was in partnership with four of the 11. So it's a really awesome, awesome opportunity there. Yeah.
What's the potential for the other surrounding school districts? Is it a greater one there, or is it facility-based?
I think that's an interesting question. I think it's certainly, facilities are a huge role in that. You know, I think we're oftentimes seeing schools that are already have a, have some sort of initiatives. You know, District 6 just built a brand-new shop center with one of their high schools. It was a great marriage there. We've been approached by a couple of other schools just in some preliminary conversations. Again, it's a little bit more guided by the school district on, you know, their mission and their vision, and oftentimes, space limiting.
And funding for that program.
Certainly, yeah, absolutely. And the unique thing about that partnership is it's designed in a way that students, you know, sort of finish their four years of high school, but they would sort of come over to Ames and finish out that last little bit of their associate's degree, maybe in a fifth year or a 13th year, as we may call it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and the PTEC has some nuances in the, in the industrial, the partnership from the industry side, but we'll save that. And I'm happy to answer some of those. We also have our Career Academy program, which is a fully immersive on-campus experience for our students that is certificate-based in a CTE field. I think we have 11 or 12 areas from med prep to EMT to welding to graphic and animation to radio and communication that was mentioned earlier. And our program, students come to our campus. That is a really unique partnership because it's a full ride, all expenses included in that partnership for those students. We have about 250 students participating this year in that Career Academy pathways here on this campus and at the Fort Leptin Campus, combined between those two locations. And last is probably our smallest bucket, but it's a bucket. It's a program that's called Ascent, and that is a Colorado Department of Education-based program where students, once they graduate from high school, I'll use that term graduate loosely, but once they finish their four years of high school, the school district is able to retain that student, but pay for that student's first year of college included as a part of that program. And so the student on paper doesn't attend the high school anymore, but because the school district is still paying the fees and the tuition for that student, that's why we lump them into the high school programs category. So that's a brief overview. I'll share some data with you all here shortly, but the, you know, the reach we're talking about is 27 to 2,800 students, 61 partner high schools, reaching, you know, basically from border to border, through the Loveland-Thompson Valley area down to the St. Brain Valley School District. We're basically in partnership with just about every high school that's in that region. Dr. Rothamer also asked me to share a few sort of updates of what we've been working on. And ultimately, I'm going to focus in on one really project that we're very, very excited about to share with you all today. But in the last year, there's been a lot of moving pieces. COVID certainly complicated some of those pieces. We largely became the translator for what CDE is saying, what CDAG is saying, trying to help folks with their board policies, and really, how do we still make sure that students are earning college credit through this very interesting year? And we certainly, I think, for the large part, had a tremendously successful year. Something happened, though, and I want to, we're going to look at the next slide here, is I realized quickly that our high school partners were really bad at telling this amazing story. If you were to poll all 60 of our high school partners, I bet 20 or 30, maybe, maybe half of the administrators at those high schools could really tell you what was happening in their building. I was, it was something that was kind of interesting to me, that they weren't sharing this wonderful, amazing story that's saving families millions and millions of dollars each and every year. What also happened is every once in a while, what would happen is I'd get an email from Dr. Rothamer that says, "Hey, I'm going to go meet with this school. Can you tell me what we're doing with this school?" Or I'd get an email from Dr. Bornstein that says, "Oh, we're going to have this meeting with so-and-so school. What are we doing there?" And it became pretty apparent that we don't really have a good sense on a, on an annual basis of what each school is doing individually. And so we embarked on an incredible collaborative journey between, you know, our department, IRNA, our high school partners, to truly find out what information would actually be helpful for you all. So that way, maybe our high schools could get this information, share it with their parents, share it with their boards. But also internally, we had this information at our fingertips anytime those things would come up. And so I've affectionately created what I like to call, is this going to work here for me? Can I get next slide, please? I've affectionately created what I like to call a report card for our high schools. I don't tell them that's called a report card, but we're, we've created something this year called the High School Profile Sheets. And what we have done is for every single one of the partner high schools that we have in our area, we have created this snapshot of what they've accomplished in the last academic year. And this snapshot starts right at the top. Number of credits, total students participating, average number of credits, and the number of degrees and certificates that were awarded to their students in the last academic year. I've chosen to share with you all Northridge High School, which I think is a great snapshot of a, of a school that's, we're doing a lot of really wonderful work. From there, we also wanted to make sure that we equipped our high school partners with information to help them be informed on who's actually participating in their concurrent enrollment programs. Gender breakdown, race and ethnicity breakdown, first-generation student breakdown. So ideally, what we could do is help our high school partners see if they have inequities on their side that they may need to address. Maybe that they see that there are certain populations are overrepresented in their concurrent enrollment programs. Maybe certain populations are underrepresented. And so certainly, you know, we facilitate the experience where high schools really are the ones that are identifying students to participate. And so we wanted to make sure the schools had that information at their fingertips. Further down, we included a breakdown of where the students are taking their courses, on campus, online, home high school, remote, what their success rates are, what their completion rates are. The bottom right-hand corner signifies the number of tuition, the dollars of tuition saving for Northridge High School. $88,000 in tuition savings just at Northridge just last year, which is pretty powerful. The backside of the sheet, we, a few more bits that are maybe more interesting to us, but we did a great breakdown so schools can see how students are performing in each one of those categories. We also identified a matriculation rate, so we're also identifying which schools are sending students. Quick note, that matriculation rate is not based on this year's graduating class. That matriculation rate is based on the class that graduated last year. The rest of the data is based on this last academic year. And then further down, you'll see, we list all of the courses that are offered at their high school location, and we also list all of their credential, their certified instructors at that high school location there, too. So in a one snapshot page that we can actually get a feel for what is exactly happening at each one of our partner high schools. Yes.
Do you have 60 of these?
So that's a kind of a little bit of a tricky question, but the answer is yes. Certainly, some of our schools are in partnership with other schools. They may not be distinct, and they may be clumped together. But 50 plus of these sheets ready to rock and roll for your reading pleasure. Yes, no, not a problem. And then the bottom left-hand of that back sheet, I actually, we actually included the total number of all concurrent enrollment students from the last academic year. So you can also see our just snapshot from the last academic year. 2,966 students, 25,000 credits awarded, 89% course success rate, and a $1.7 million tuition savings. That's just the tuition dollars. It doesn't include any fees, books, or any of the other really wonderful stuff that we've done.
And, yo. Go ahead.
No, no, I'm still catching my.
Oh, you're catching. When you talk about savings, that means savings to the student. So they would have paid that much if they'd have just been a regular student at Ames.
Just at Ames, that is correct. And that, and based on in-district tuition rate on that.
Right, yeah.
So that number is certainly much higher than that number, but we can. So, so that number is certainly much higher than that number, but we can say, we saved at least that much.
Sure, but even then, that's spectacular, I would say.
Absolutely.
I would like to have you just to talk a little bit more about the Ascent program.
Sure.
I didn't, I mean, it sounded really amazing.
Yep. So the Ascent program is a program through the Department of Education where students, while they are in high school, have to demonstrate college readiness by completing a certain number of college credits. But that are concurrent enrollment credits. They have to earn at least 12 concurrent enrollment credits while they're in high school. Then what happens is the school district and student apply to the state to, for spots available, where that student will continue to be a, a student of that high school. Really, that's for the per pupil funding, so that way the school district still can account that student for funding. And the, the spirit of that then is the, the school would take those dollars that they would have gotten for that per pupil funding, and they turn that into the tuition dollars for that student. And so that student would then attend any, any institution in the state, really. But, you know, we have a small, less than 20 that choose to come to Ames every year that are in their 13th year, if you will, of high school, but they really are Ames students, full-time Ames students. They have to be degree-seeking and, and some other elements within that. So it's a, it's a very important, plays a very important role in the ecosystem. It's a smaller role, if you will, from our, our big picture.
Is it limited?
It is. That's, that's the challenge. Yeah, so the state has a, a limited number of allotment, and I think it comes out of, it comes out of budgetary dollars, and so that's where all of that, that comes out of play. So it's not a, you know, we, a school may apply for 13 kids, but only may get two spots or something of that nature. So it's a.
Every student should take advantage.
Totally agree, yeah.
If they had a chance.
Question, that's for a graduating student, a graduated student, am I correct?
It would be a student that would be going into their 13th year, or they would have been, they would have completed their first four years of high school at that point in time, yeah.
So they are in their 13th year.
Correct, and we, they hesitate to use the word graduated because I think that would insinuate that they've left the high school. So they, they are in their 13th year, just retained by the.
So they're not, technically didn't graduate from high school.
I think that that's what they would, they technically would graduate with the following year, but that, that next year of college would be paid for.
And you have students in this program right now.
Correct, yeah. About, about 20, less than 20 a year.
I'm, I'm very familiar with this. This is, that's great.
And our, our hope is, and I, I maybe didn't share this, is our hope, we will provide this report to all of our schools, so that way I'm hopeful, again, that they'll take this wonderful, and I failed to mention, I'm so sorry, Zach. MarCom did an amazing job to make these look really beautiful and uniform, and, and create a document that, you know, somebody who's a little bit challenged in technology could edit and do some really wonderful things. So thanks, Zach. But our, our hope is that we'll share this with schools, they'll turn around and publish them in their board reports. And then we will publish this report annually internally as well for you all. So you'll be able to see this, and next year we'll have, you know, 20 and 21 sitting next to each other, and then we can continue to add to that, that body of work.
Well, you need to create a section in the Greeley Tribune like this.
It's great.
Seriously.
Somebody just got an assignment.
You know, the boards of education in our surrounding school districts should be very much familiar with this information because they might realize that you could offer these other programs if they would supplement them with some funding or do something to contribute to the, you know, a teacher or a classroom space and things like that.
Yep.
And it wouldn't cost us anything, or not much.
Yeah, and, and again, helping our partners tell their story. I mean, I think, and also internally having a better picture of what our story looks like. I think we all know it's good work. Hopefully, we're seeing that it's, it's tremendous, tremendous work, and we're making a huge difference.
A couple of things really stand out to me are, just looking at Northridge, and I know this is just one school, but 59% are first-generation college students, I would assume that being. And 53% of them are Hispanic, which I think are just two really pretty significant numbers. And I wonder how that would compare with other schools.
Sure, yeah, I, I, I don't know. You know, I think, I think the question that I maybe challenge myself with or challenge schools with is how does this compare to your student demographic in your building? And, and are there, are there certain demographics that are over or underrepresented in that picture? The demographic information is public information. We could, we could find that from, from the state website. We, we haven't necessarily made that step, hoping that maybe they'll, they'll take a little bit of that lead on, on those things. But I, I think you're, when we talk about equity gaps, and we talk about the spirit of concurrent enrollment, to, you know, again, addressing those, those barriers to higher education, I think that this is a beautiful snapshot of, of a school that's doing it really, really well.
Just off the top of your head, would you make a guess as to how that compares with?
Gosh, I would, I would be lying if I were to guess, yeah. Um, I, I do think, I, I do think, again, I think schools do a pretty good job of using this as that pipeline for, for many of their students to get their access to higher education. I, I would, I'd be lying or guessing at this point in time to try to guess the, the demographic breakdown of our entire. But the good news is, is the dashboard that we do have would tell us, so we could look that up. If we were to pull all of this high school data together into one dashboard, so we could certainly get that for you.
Be interesting.
Well, you can scare me with this knowledge, so. Russ, because concurrent is about 28, 29% of our enrollment?
It's actually a little higher, about 38 to 40, depending on the semester.
40% of enrollment? We're not getting any money for?
But one of the things I want to, Ray, thank you and your team. This is amazing, and as you said, is very powerful. And if you can, if I can take you back to the work session, and we had that full second section about data, continuous improvement. And the thing I failed to mention that Ray said so well, it's really about helping the schools tell their story and for us to tell our story. And it's the information like that that is going to be so helpful for us to do that. And they've been on the, the leading edge of doing it for our institution, and I want to recognize and thank you all for doing that.
Thank you.
This is, this is great. This is just great.
Russ, take me out to lunch with this guy.
Anytime.
Thank you, Ray.
Awesome. Okay, thank you so much, Dr. Rothmer.
Awesome presentation. Thank you very much. The second item I wanted to share for you is, and to introduce you to Brienne Ostoyet, who is our Director of Accreditation and Compliance, and she is going to share with you some information on our recent Higher Learning Commission multi-site visit report. And Brienne, if you're out there in Zoom world, and join us.
I am here. I'll start with the customary Zoom greeting of, can everyone hear me? Great. Good afternoon to you, Oxiger, Board of Trust members, and Dr. Rothmer, and thank you for that introduction. We all probably know at this point that Ames is accredited by the Higher Learning Commission, or as we like to call them, HLC. And every five years, we're required by the federal government to host an HLC peer reviewer at two of our additional locations. In mid-June, an HLC peer reviewer visited our Fort Leptin campus and our Flight Training Center. And we just recently received the final report for that site visit, and I'd like to read HLC's summary of findings in their very own words. HLC writes, "The purpose of this multi-location visit to Ames Community College is to confirm the continuing effective oversight by the college of its additional locations. The utilization of the additional locations is necessary for Ames to accommodate the rapidly increasing enrollments, demographic changes within the service area, and changes in local workforce needs. Another pertinent factor is Colorado's intent to expand concurrent enrollment opportunities for high school students. The future concurrent enrollment programs are likely to be offered in the high schools, requiring that Ames develop additional locations and expand their need for concurrent enrollment and high school programs. The programs offering at the locations are diverse and meet the instructional needs of the local communities. The diversity of offerings demonstrates Ames' ability to customize programs and delivery to meet the needs of the local communities. In other words, to put the needs of the students and communities first. There are numerous examples of student success stories and of the college's nimbleness to assure that the additional locations are financially viable. Use of strategic partnerships is a mutually beneficial key component for financial stability of the additional locations. Visits to the two additional locations at Fort Leptin and the Ames Flight Training Center, and conversations with leadership from the Greeley campus affirmed a rigorous process for the following: planning, determining the need for a new location, evaluating the feasibility of the facility and providing ongoing maintenance, determining the viability for quality program offerings, budgeting, instructional delivery and oversight, evaluation and assessment of student learning outcomes, and my favorite, continuous improvement. The administrative structure at Ames is designed to utilize college-wide leadership to provide oversight for functions wherever the courses and programs are delivered. The college's policies and procedures are comprehensive and apply to the outreach locations. The strengths of the operations of Ames Community College's additional locations are many. The reviewer observed many best practices at the locations and saw numerous examples of careful review, continuous improvement, and monitoring for continuous viability at the locations. Students enrolled at the locations are appreciative of the opportunity to participate in Ames programs. They know that the reputation of Ames and the skills that they develop will help them to achieve their educational goals. Evidence collected during the site visit confirms that Ames Community College continues to have sufficient procedures in place to provide quality higher educational programming and services at outreach sites. I'd like to close by emphasizing that much of the accreditation work and the compliance work that we do here at Ames is not just me, it's not just academic affairs. It is the whole college coming together to highlight our collective excellence as we embrace our mission and as we support student success. Congratulations to all of Ames on a successful site visit.
What Brienne didn't share from that report, you basically get monitoring reports. Where the other box they checked is that we're adequate. Well, I can tell you, we're not just adequate. That report is absolutely amazing and outstanding and highlights the strengths of what is happening at this institution. And so Brienne and team have done a phenomenal job in telling our story to our creditor. So I want to thank Brienne and the whole team that worked on it. And in your board packet is a little right up on where it's called the Spotlight, where we kind of detail a little bit more, went into that visit.
Great.
Well, I, I don't know how you get any better than that. That's just absolutely amazing. So, again, I'll speak for myself, and the rest of the board can certainly join in if they like, but that's you folks out there. This is all you, and we appreciate you. We can't, we can't thank you enough. Awesome job. Pat your cells on the back. Give yourself a big hand.
How it got there this morning? Planning, carrying through, evaluation, improvement. Great.
Yes, thank you. The next item under the CEO President's Report, we have Mr. Jensen, who has some four items for us, and he is also joining us via Zoom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Rothmer. The power of technology. You can go from in-person to Zoom in a matter of an hour. I am pleased to present several items to the board. First is the budget report as of the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th. And as you look through the budget categories there, we were under budget in several areas and, and actually ended the fiscal year very strong in the, in the fact that we were able to transfer a little bit, a little more than $26 million into our plant funds. And so, again, it was a strong fiscal year for the college, and all departments did well in managing their budgets, as you can tell. And their revenues, revenues came in as expected. And we'll, you know, this is the end of the fiscal year, so this is, this is the last time you'll see fiscal year 21 until we get into budget assumptions in November. In the, at the September meeting, I'll start to highlight fiscal year 22 and, and the budget that was passed last May for that. And so we're kind of transitioning from one fiscal year to the next here. I also, at the September meeting, that's, that'll be a pivotal, pivotal meeting as far as knowing exactly what the assessed values are that are, that are coming in from the county. I expect those at the end of August, and that's assessed evaluations for all property, for our tax and mill levy purposes, for the general property tax revenue. And so my initial review, I keep in constant communication with the county, the county assessor, and the county CFO. And I'm still feeling quite, quite positive of the estimates we made for fiscal year 23. So stay tuned for that in September. But as far as fiscal year 21 is concerned, it was a strong budget year for us, and I'll stand for any questions that board members may have as, as you've looked at the budget report for June 30th.
Thank you, Chuck. Any questions or comments?
Just a comment.
Please.
26 million in transfers into the reserve. Thank you, COVID. I suspect everything got cut down, including the budget, so. So there was one good thing about COVID.
Yeah. Anybody else?
No, I, I'm impressed. I, it's, it's good, it's good to see more, you know, that we have plenty. And that we can do more, and we are doing more, so that's, that's what it's all about.
Yeah, with, with this fiscal year ending as such, it is, of course, continuing to position us well for fiscal year 22. And as I continue to look out into 23 now, already monitoring oil production. And as we all know, as we go to the gas station, the price of oil has continued to rise. And so that, we're seeing a strong, strong barrel price oil that's since the beginning of the year, which of course equates to, that equates to strong assessed values for our fiscal year 23 budget. So I'm closely monitoring that on a monthly basis, both production, oil sold, gas sold, and then the price in both of those commodities. So it's a, it's a never-changing game. There's no question about that. But I'm still, I still have a, a high degree of optimism for the next several fiscal years, so. And of course, as, as the board knows, we'll head into, you know, budget assumptions in November and begin the whole process as we go through the next fiscal year with tuition and compensation. Then ultimately, the approval of the fiscal year 23 budget in May. And so we, we begin the cycle once again for the next fiscal year. So that's, that's my report on the budget for fiscal year 21.
All right. Well, thank you, Chuck.
I'd next, like, kind of in keeping with the fiscal conversation, I'd like to draw the board's attention to the legislative report summary. There were several positive things that came out of the last legislative session. I'm going to highlight just a few. It was, it was, in all counts, a good year for higher education. There were several bills that were of significant importance to all the campuses. The first one that I want to highlight is House Bill 1330, the Higher Education Student Success. And this is a, a, a piece of legislation that is doing many things, one of which is increasing our, our Colorado Opportunity Scholarship funding by a million, almost a million three, which is a significant increase in that funding to help students over the next couple of years attain, attain a higher ed education. Also, interestingly enough, included in this bill is a change of policy in how that local district colleges no longer need the higher ed or the departments or higher ed commissions' approval for bachelor degrees. So for bachelors of applied science, so that's an exciting opportunity, perhaps for the future of local district colleges, both us and Colorado Mountain College. Of course, Colorado Mountain College has had BAS, BAS degrees for several years, but this removes one layer of, of approval needed for if, if and when Ames Community College is interested in that pursuit of a, of a bachelor's of a pride science degree in the future. So again, a couple of interesting aspects of House Bill 1330. The other one that I wanted to highlight, too, they, legislature put a fair amount of money into workforce development, both in House Bill 1264, which funds workforce development and increasing worker skills. And included in that $55 million bill is $10 million that are available for CTE programs to apply for funding for equipment. And again, local district colleges are eligible to apply for those. And again, local district colleges are eligible to apply for those funds. And so there is another grant opportunity for us going forward in workforce development. And there were several other bills that had to do with workforce development that in partnership, you know, across the state with industry and such. So I think there'll be continued opportunity in the future for partnerships between higher ed and industry. The other, other kind of not necessarily directly related to higher education, but I think of significant importance to higher education is the, is the significant funding that was put into expanding broadband services across Colorado. I think that continues to support rural areas and remote areas with better internet access. And so again, not that that's a direct, a direct, it could have a direct impact on all colleges, but I just thought that was of significant importance to higher ed in general, to the state of Colorado, the type of work that's being done in developing broadband across the state. The, there are some things that I'm continuing to monitor. You know, there were some adjustments made to property tax classifications, primarily in the residential rate assessment. There is a two-year reduction in that rate from 7.15 to 6.95. So it's a relatively small reduction in the residential rate assessment. And, and I'll have more to, more to discuss about that in September after I've seen all the assessed evaluations that come in at the end of August. Again, this doesn't cause a lot of concern for me at this point, you know, as we're all well aware within our taxing district. Yes, we have seen decline in some oil production, but we've also seen some pretty dramatic increase in residential properties, residential valuations and residential inventory. And so it's lots of, lots of interesting things to talk about in September after the assessed evaluations come out from the county assessor's office here at the end of, at the end of August. A couple of other just general comments about the session. They, as they project into the next fiscal year, they, General Assembly is projected to have a $3.2 billion more to spend or save in the general fund than they spent in the current fiscal year. So as we entered the pandemic 18 months ago, there was much doom and gloom about state budgets in general. And, and by, I, I wish I could answer that question succinctly, but I can't. Actually, the economy did very well. And the revenues that the state has received far exceeded any of their expectations or projections. So bottom line, going into the next legislative session, which is only now four months away, five months away, January, they are beginning the session with a very, very healthy fund balance and cash reserves going into the next session. There will be some things that we will continue to monitor as we go into the next session. Primarily the local collective bargaining bill that, that could have impact on higher ed in general. More to come on that. I don't have a tremendous amount of detail on that right now, but that is, that is probably a bill that did not make it through this session, but it appears that it will come back again at the next session. And, and lots of discussion to have about that as that, as that bill potentially comes back. And then again, also, as we know, Colorado received another congressional seat. And so there'll be redistricting of some of the House, federal House seats in the next year as Colorado gains a seat. And let me look at my notes here. I think those are some of the highlights that I wanted to to mention. If there's other questions that the board members may have as you've looked over that summary, I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions?
I got Mark. On the, on that funding for the CTE, the 55 million? Is that, is that for district funded or is that all community colleges?
It's all community colleges, but the important part of that is that local district colleges were included in the eligibility for that funding. That's, that's one thing we, anytime legislation is proposed, we're, make sure that the local districts don't get left out inadvertently. And so that's the important part of that aspect is that we are specifically included in those, in that, in that legislation. So yes, local districts will be able to apply for those funds.
And that's a grant application format?
Yeah, it'll be a grant application. Yep.
Yeah, I might mention that if you look at our budget, the grants have been very, very successful this year. They were up 379% and further on in the packet, the grants are itemized and we've done very, very well. So somebody's been very busy and we thank you. The question Chuck on the residential rate assessment, was, was that relative to Gallagher Amendment?
You know, it, it is, but again, that becomes less of an issue for us because we debrused in 1999.
Oh, okay.
So that doesn't have an impact on us. Really, it's just a direct impact on the level of valuation. So we don't, we're, that was probably, I, I, I remark, I've continued to remark on pivotal decisions that future or past boards of trustees and administrations have made. And to me, that, that decision back in 1998, 99, to ask the voters to debruse was, was game changer for Ames Community College. So Tabor, Tabor is not, is not an issue for us.
Okay. Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
I'm good.
If there's no, if there's no additional questions on the legislative report, I'll take your lead there, Mr. Chairman, and walk into the grants report. That's the other packet of information included for the board, a summary of the activity that we accomplished in this past year. And, and I'll make a few highlights on that report. Within the grants activity on campus, again, highlighting a couple of the, couple of, or several of the longstanding grants, the Trio Classic and the Trio STEM. We were, as we call, we were re-awarded a five-year grant back in 2020. So both of those grants will be extended, are extended through 2025 at that same dollar amount. So that was, you know, credit to our trio program or our trio staff and implying for that and being re-awarded that again for another five-year period through fiscal year 25 at those dollar amounts that you see there on their report. So very exciting in those two arenas. We also continue to do very well within the Perkins arena. Again, that's a state yearly grant where we apply for fiscal support for our academic programs. And we've, we've done, we've done very, we do very well in the Perkins funding area. And the majority of that money, I think almost all of it goes into equipment in our CTE programs. So that, wanted to mention that one. There are some interesting ones. Primarily, I want to highlight the industry's training on the second page, the Colorado First and Existing Industry, where we've, we were successful in working with industry to the tune of almost $400,000. That involved eight different grants and seven different companies throughout Weld and into Laramore County, where we would, we would partner with those industries and providing training. And so we've seen, seen really good growth in that arena. And I think we'll see as, as I, as I kind of highlighted and as I highlighted in the legislative update, you know, again, there's state funding that is being committed towards workforce development, workforce training. I continue to think there'll be additional opportunities for us to work with local industry on employee training. So I wanted to highlight that one. And we are, I'll, maybe I'll stop at that. We, we also on the second page or third page, we do highlight a number of the collaborative partnerships that we continue on with local, you know, District Six, with the Thompson School District. We've had a longstanding partnership with the University of Colorado Boulder, with the Bueno program out at our Fort Leptin campus. And so those are always worth mentioning, some of those longer-standing relationships that we've had with some of those higher ed institutions and school districts. So again, credit to our, all of our departments on campus, our grants office, our faculty, our staff, our administration. I mean, it's a, it's again, this is, you know, when we do work on grants, it's, it's everybody and everybody across the spectrum involved in these types of grants. And so with that, I'll, I'll stand for any, any questions on the grant report. If there's a, a grant that a board member has a particular question or interest on, I'm happy to, happy to respond.
Chuck, number one, thank you for the presentation. It's amazing. And I might have more questions later. But I would like to say, you know, I'm really, congratulations to the trio team for, you know, the, the grants that they worked to get and that they, looks like they will receive for the next five years. So hats off to the trio team. That's amazing. It's very important. But thank you. And like I said, I probably will reread again because I do have some more questions, I know, but I'll formulate them later. So thank you.
And maybe, maybe just one final comment as we, as we head into the September Board Retreat. You know, that's when we're, we're planning cabinet and executive team is, is preparing for and planning for a robust conversation on issues from the pandemic, including things that the campus did in response. But also will be a, a, a complete picture of, of what we were able to or will be accomplishing with the federal dollars that we've received through all the higher education relief acts that have come out of the federal government. And so those aren't included in this standard grant report because that's going to be a, a full conversation in September as we go through, as we go through what the effects of some of the things from the pandemic and some of the federal monies that we received from the federal government in response to the pandemic. So stay tuned for that in September. With that, I will move quickly into, into the foundation update. I know Kelly Jackson is, is in the audience. So there's, if there's questions that she can respond to, to in, in person. But as exciting news within the Welcome Center and Student Commons, naming and recognition projects, we are announced the, and Kelly, Kelly will hand out to the board that we're, we've, we've gone live with our Name the Seat campaign. It's an online application that people can get online and make a donation and name a seat in the auditorium in the Welcome Center. So that, that's just went live here in the last couple of days. And I see Kelly is, is handing out some information on that for the board. And again, you know, that's one part of the, of the naming and recognition project. Those seats, those seats range anywhere from $75 to $300. And that's, we were hopeful for lots of participation from lots of people on that. A quick update on where the funding levels are right now within that, our campaign for college promise using the Welcome Center and the Student Commons as a, as a catalyst for naming and recognition opportunities. We, we have raised to date 125,000 and, and have almost a little over 300,000 pending. These are relationships and conversations that Kelly and her team have continued to foster and work on. Kelly and her team on a weekly basis have, in partnership with Mike Millsap and his team, are holding tours of the facility of the Welcome Center and Student Commons again to generate interest in donors interested in either recognizing a room or naming a room. And so those will be ongoing on a weekly, weekly or bi-weekly basis where Kelly will be having those opportunities to meet with donors and show them opportunities within those facilities. And so with that, I will stand for any questions on the foundation or any other of the topics that I had covered.
That's a low.
Well, that's what happens when you let me take my mask off. I can talk a lot.
He went away, but he still didn't go away.
All right. Thank you, Chuck. Next up, we have Dr. Weiss Kaver, our Vice President of Student Engagement, Inclusion and Success.
So I've officially welcomed the Board of Trustees to fall, fall semester. And I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome our colleagues along with the Board of Trustees, along with Cabinet. Happy Fall Semester, everyone. You know, it's an exciting time of year. For most of us, this is the second best time of year. First best time of year is at commencement, when we're watching students graduate. Today I have some highlights for you, and I also have an enrollment update. We'll be going over some interesting data from summer. And then also a more current look at where we are as of this week to give you an idea of where we are in terms of enrollment. So for summer, as you saw in your, or I'm sorry, if we want to start with highlights, the page that was in your board packet, you will see that I talked to you all a little bit about the Enrollment Management Department and Strategic Enrollment Management. Just want to certainly highlight the folks who have been working really, really hard to do that. Dana Kohler, our Executive Director of Enrollment Management, Aaron Presswich, our navigation team, our recruiters. These folks are changing fundamentally the way they do business in order to better respond to students during the pandemic and post the pandemic. So I really appreciate that. The second thing that I would like to share with you over the summer and last, over the last year, we have been spending probably about one and a half departments within the Stace Division. So we're talking pretty significant number of folks have been working very, very hard with IT under the leadership of Brad Yoder to implement Student Work Day. So you remember I was talking about HCM and finance and what that did for the college and allowing us to be able to really move forward. We're doing that same thing for students. The difference is where HCM and finance had kind of an HCM stream and a finance stream. In the student world, between Dr. Rothmer's areas and my areas, we have about nine streams. And so it's a pretty big undertaking. It's been keeping us really busy, but that team is doing amazing work. We expect our first go-live to be toward the end of January 22. So we're excited about that. In the financial aid world, I have some great news. If you haven't heard on NPR or other news sources, the Department of Education has announced that it is no longer requiring verification for most financial aid applications. So here's what that means for our students. Our students will no longer have to resubmit documentation because they were randomly chosen for verification. This impacts over 500 Ames students just this year. What that means is students will be able to get their financial aid quicker than they would have otherwise. I wanted to share with you all how much money we'll be giving students this year. Unlike Chuck, I did include HERF numbers because they're impressive and I don't think you can hear them enough. So in terms of our free dollars, we're estimating awarding students $7.2 million this fall in free money. Now that is thanks to Pell Grants, Colorado Grants, the HERF monies. Now that is thanks to Pell Grants, Colorado Grants, uh, the HERF monies, um, and AIM Scholar Scholarship, so institutional funds. We are only planning on awarding four hundred and five thousand dollars in student loans, which is incredible for our students to not have to take out that level of loan debt. I would like to draw your attention to fall in, um, a little bit different this year. Um, our sale office would like you to note that this year, uh, due to safety protocols, it's just going to be internal departments. So rather than having a lot of community partners join us, it will be just AIM's departments that will be joining us. Uh, we'll have individually packed, packaged food and we'll also have shaved ice. Who doesn't love that? I would like to make one correction to the date that is in your packet and that is for the Loveland Fall-In Event. That will actually be September ninth, not September eighth. So as you know, Fall-In is all about getting connected. Stay connected. And what better way to stay connected than to make sure that you have your phone with you? So since when have I showed up to a board meeting without gifts?
Never happened.
Never, never. So these are really cool little cell phone holders that can, um, use for your phones.
Thank you.
They come from our academic advisors. So just send it right in there. Cabinet, we have some for you too. Our advisors are working incredibly hard right now. Um, in the last two days, they've advised over two hundred and fifty students. Uh, trying to help our students get access, get enrolled. And that's what it's all about, right? Is getting that connection piece. So with that, I'll go ahead and transition to, um, our enrollment update. Uh, I'd like to start on the first page of the handout that I provided at the beginning of the meeting titled Summer Two Thousand One Enrollment Update, Latinx, Hispanic, Chicanos, Jump in Enrollment. And as I was working with IRNA, one of the things that we found really spectacular about, um, our summer enrollment is that our Latinx populations had a huge increase over the summer in, in a way that we didn't see in other populations. So, um, we had, um, first letter, uh, Latinx students who are first generation were, it's six hundred and five students over the summer. Um, that is up, um, about thirty-one percent. We're at thirty-one percent FTE in Latinx students over the summer. Of those students, eighty-one percent, almost eighty-two percent of those students are degree seeking. So truly, truly a highly motivated group of folks. When we look at the age group, we see a huge span between eighteen and thirty-four is our largest age group demographic in the Latinx community. So we see folks in their early career, mid-career coming. I was a couple of weeks ago at a multicultural fair panel for the city of Greeley. They host a multicultural fair every October. And Ames is involved in that and has a seat at that table. And I was listening to the panel. And of course there's county commissioners there and other prominent community leaders. One of the things they mentioned is that District Six is now sixty percent Latinx student population. Right? And that, to me, that really resonates because that's our community we're serving. When I looked at the data yesterday, um, I saw that as of, as of this week, forty-five percent of our students who are enrolled so far identified Latinx, Hispanic or Chicanos. Now, it probably won't stay that way because we still have a couple of weeks to go. But I find that really impressive when we're looking at what are our goals to diversify our student population and to ensure that we're serving the whole community. If you turn the page to the back page there, you're going to see, um, some interesting facts about enrollment. I provided a little bit of information to you about our Arrow Team. Um, the Arrow Team is part of our COVID recovery, um, but did want to share with you that since we've started the Arrow Team, we've made almost thirteen hundred student contacts of people who were impacted by COVID. Um, our current recruitment efforts, um, we have been doing active outreach. As I said, we've been changing the, the very foundation of what we're doing. On the bottom right-hand side, you're going to see where we set our goals. And we got our goals be from us, from a very complicated statistical analysis. Um, basically it's a statistical regression process. It's AI machine learning is what helped us project out and decide what our goals should be. We looked at the last four years, including the COVID pandemic. The goals we selected for enrollment, uh, this fall, you'll see right there. I'd like to share with you that, um, as far as our retention goal, we are ninety-seven students away from meeting our retention goal. In our recruitment goal, we're seventy-three students away from meeting that goal. For previous high school students, we're seventy-one students away from meeting that goal. New students to Ames were two hundred and seventeen students away from meeting that goal. Now trustee, how we, we got some work to do in concurrent. We have some work to do in concurrent, but there's good news. We're seventeen hundred students away from meeting a goal in concurrent. Now, yeah, that's all. Um, here's what happens. When I looked over the data over the last four years, this week and next week tend to be the weeks where the rosters are coming in and we start to see that spike. So over the next three weeks, I'm anticipating that group to push us up and help us meet that overall fall enrollment goal of sixty-two, eighty-eight. Um, I do feel fairly confident that we'll be very close to meeting that goal. It's certainly lower than our goals have been in the past, but I think we need to keep in mind COVID is still impacting our institution. For instance, three weeks ago, we had three hundred and seventy students enroll in a week. If that week, that weekend, the CDC came out with information about the COVID variant. The next week, we only enrolled two hundred students, two hundred and twenty. There was a significant sixty percent decline in enrollment. And the only attributing factor that we can find, the only correlating factor that we can find is the news about the COVID variant. And so we still, as an institution, are very much experiencing what that means for our students, what that means for our staff, um, and what that means for us as a whole. With that, I brought you with numbers enough. I tried to make it really exciting. I gave you gifts. Um, I what kind of questions can I answer for you today?
I, I would just
One at a time.
I mean, the schools haven't even started yet. You know, there was just the article in the paper this morning about listing all the schools in the county. Most of them don't even start until next week. So that doesn't surprise me at all that concurrent enrollment is, at this point, is down.
Yeah, hopefully we'll see that big boost.
Because it boosted last spring, right?
The exact same thing happened last spring.
Yeah. And I just don't see it. I, I just think we're, we're eighteen months into COVID and we're probably gonna be another eighteen months. Trying to guide ourselves to some degree of normality once again. And, you know, it is what it is. And we're very fortunate to have the funding that we have to make things happen as we need them to happen. None, you know, it's, it is what it is for right now. We can't, you know.
I agree.
This is a miracle to some extent, what we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Sarah, I'm really impressed with the Latinx population that is coming and the, and the count. Does that surprise you? I mean, I think that's a reflection of what you're doing and what Ames is doing. I think you're doing it right.
I think we are too. You know? I know that in, um, I can certainly say in the SACE division, we have been focusing on becoming a Hispanic-serving institution versus a Hispanic-enrolling institution. And, and what that means is rather than enrolling a particular demographic and saying, okay, go for it. We're, we're concentrating on enrolling a particular demographic, but creating an environment that is welcoming for these students. The same could be said for our LGBTQ students, certainly our veteran students. Um, you know, we see an increase in veteran students as we talked about last spring. So I am so proud of the work that Ames is doing in this regard, and I think it's only going to get better.
Um, on your District Six cohort of sixty-six percent, did that include the charter schools or was that just District Six?
They only indicated District Six. That was a statistic, uh, provided.
Not the District Six charter schools as well.
It was just District Six.
That's been pretty consistent though, I think that number.
Yeah, Sarah, I'm, uh, commenting on something you alluded to. Uh, yes, we're, we're are an institution that is very open to Latinx. But what I see is the important part of that is we're doing that, we're welcoming that demographic, but we're not shutting others out.
Correct.
And, and I, I think that's, for me, that's, that's key. Uh, and it proves that it can be done. You know, we don't have to concentrate on anyone. We just have to, in essence, we're making it equally open to everybody. And I, I think that's extremely important. And I think it's very attractive to people out there. So our communities are going to be what they're going to be. The, our communities create our own cultures. Uh, I'm on a planning commission. We've had this discussion many times and, uh, and we decided we're not going to focus on anyone. Our, our culture, the people who move into a community for whatever reason will create that culture. And, and to be open to that culture as it develops is gonna be what makes us and them successful.
I absolutely agree. And, um, in fact, I've been working with the CDI to expand some of our programming to immigrant and refugee populations, as we see an increase of refugee populations on campus. Um, you know, and, and so there has been talks of different student affinity groups, um, on campus. Um, so groups where I identify with, I was talking with a colleague the other day, I heard rumors of, um, you know, a different, a Christian affinity group. And so what I love about Ames is our ability to be inclusive and respect diversity and the different perspectives that comes. So I think your point is very much, um, at the heart of what we're doing. All right. With that, hopefully you're done with statistics for the day, folks.
Thank you. Most welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Weiskaver. Uh, the next item on the President's Report is, uh, the CEO President's Report that's included in your packet from Dr. Bornstein. I won't go through that, but it's certainly there for um, you to look at. Um, in addition, we have the Employees' Report. And since this is our first meeting back um, after so long, um, over the last eighteen months, Ames has hired a few people to, um, help us accomplish everything that we've been sharing with you. And we've asked, um, Administrative Services, Human Resources, IT, Marketing and Communications. Um, if you could come up and line up as supervisors and who you're introducing and share name, title, and when started. So if you could, um, go ahead and process through.
Good afternoon. I'm Dee Schultz, the Executive Director of Human Resources. I have two folks I'd like to introduce. I have Audrey Stutler, who has actually been with us since, for almost a year. Uh, in September, she came on as a temp employee to help us with, uh, COVID case management. And then we were able to hire her in March as our HR Business Support Specialist in, uh, Employee Relations. So I'd like to welcome Audrey. And then I I'd like to introduce, uh, Crystal Danencourt. Uh, she started with us in March as our HR recruiter. So we've been keeping her very busy, uh, as you can see. And, uh, also would like to, just a very quick note that she is a past graduate of Ames.
All right, Dan, you want to do a microphone check? So excited to have a great group of facility staff here today. And I was able to also bring some supervisors with us. So I'll make an introduction and then step aside. So David Mon's been with us since twenty-fourteen in the Planning Specialist Two role and recently promoted to Assistant Director, focusing on planning and projects. So welcome, David.
And I also have the distinct opportunity of introducing the play as well. We're reintroducing, you guys might remember about eighteen months ago, I had the pleasure of introducing Shelby G for the first time in the Draft Plan One position, position, where we were just able, start of July, to promote Shelby to the Draft Plan Two. So we're really pleased that we were able to do that.
Um, so Christopher Shedd, uh, has been with us actually since, um, January of two thousand nineteen. But, uh, we were doing snow removal at that board meeting, so he never got officially introduced. And he just recently got promoted to Grounds Tech Two. Um, so he's taking care of all the satellite campuses. Um, next there is Kevin Peterson. He also got, uh, hired during the pandemic. Um, in May of two thousand twenty, he's an irrigation specialist, uh, for the satellite campuses. So they are the core of Fort Lupton Windsor campuses.
And I'd like to, uh, present John Moore to you. Uh, he is our Building Systems Control Specialist. He's been in that position for the past four months. Before that, he was at HVAC Tech. And even before that, he was a, a grounds technician as well. Overall, he's been at Ames for the past four years.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Derek Wickham. I'm the IT Director at Support Services and pleased to introduce you, well, sort of introduce you. He's kind of started Ames. Basically, he's been here for such a long time, but it was my pleasure to promote Matthew Seawald to IT Support Specialist Three.
This is Mike Mesa. He came to us through a temp agency during the move over to the, all right, the Burrows that he helped us out with. And we hired him full-time as soon as his contract was over to a technical support specialist, Level One.
Uh, good afternoon. I'd like to introduce you to Paige Thomas. She's been here about a year and a half. And with all of the changes to events and the Welcome Center, is now the Director of Sponsorships and Events. Introduce you to Taylor Brown. Taylor, you've been here for six months. You've seen a, an uptick in our social media game. It's because Taylor Brown is here now and she is the Social Media Manager. So it's been awesome to have her here managing all those counts. Julia Smith. Um, she got here to do communications for us about a month or two before COVID hit. So we're very lucky to have her. Um, and she is now the Director of Communications. Nadie Wilson, uh, coming from Facilities. He's the newest member on our team and he is now the Audio-Visual Manager.
Good afternoon. My name is Blake Ketchum. I'm the Director
Good afternoon. My name is Floyd Ketchum. I'm the Director of Information Security and IT. I'm excited to introduce Vince Michaels. He's our Information Security Analyst. He's been working hard at making it easier for us to interact with technology, especially with APTA, so please welcome him.
We're going to round out today's presentation. We are the Kelly and Kelly team. This is Kelly Zielman. She is our Alumni and Corporate Engagement Manager. She started with us as a temp, and then we hired her as soon as we realized we had a gem in our hands. So welcome, Kelly.
Well, thank you to all the supervisors for the introductions and certainly a warm welcome to all our new, newest team members. The Student Engagement Inclusion Success Team, as well as the Academic Affairs Team, will do introductions at your next board meeting. Just wanted to make sure we included. Dr. Bornstein had one additional item she wanted me to share with all of you. And this comes from our Human Resources Department and an institutional achievement that I think we would like to take time to share with you and then to celebrate. And to give you a little bit of context, Ames has been part of the Health Links Network for the about three years. And Health Links is based in the Center for Health, Work and Environment at the Colorado School of Public Health. And their mission is to further the vision of a healthier and safer workplace with a focus on total worker health. And what they do is they conduct an assessment of the organizations. And it's taken on based on the responses, and we're given some kind of a report card. And I think Ray kind of gave you, you know, a little bit of information on report cards and dashboards. And what just real high level, what those assessments include is the different organizational supports that are available. So how well do our leaders support the teams, health and safety? And what resources are available for promoting health and safety? Workplace assessment. So what types of activities does your organization complete to understand team members' needs? And then the interest in terms of health and safety. Health programs and policies. So clearly, what kind of programs and policies we have in place. Safety programs and policies. The engagement, so to what degree are team members are aware and engaged in health and safety practices? And then evaluation, so what steps does the organization take to measure the impact in health of our team members? And basically, over the past, the previous two years, Ames was recognized as partners by Health Links, which is basically their middle certification. And what I wanted to share with you this year is that Ames is recognized as a 2021 Certified Healthy Workplace Leader. So that's the very highest level of certification or acknowledgement that you can get from Health Links. So certainly, one of the things that was done through the pandemic in HR was worked on even prior to that is how we take care of our employees and students. So just wanted to share that recognition with you. So certainly, kudos to all of Ames, but in particular Dee and her team. And that chair concludes the President's Report.
Okay, well, boy, talk about ending on a great note. Great work. Thank you. We appreciate it. So how about comments from board members? You want to start it?
I'll start.
Okay.
Because I don't want to be last either. First off, I I just want to say it's so nice, I've said it a few times, to see people in person versus on Zoom. Zoom is wonderful. I thought we had it, but in person is much, much better. The amount of work that you have done through the pandemic is just amazing, and the fact that you tackled what you did under the pandemic, and the fact that we're we're on the right road, we're improving, we have health certifications. I mean, it's just every year has been better. I haven't been here that long. And I mean, every board meeting, things get better, there's improvements. We learn a lot, and it looks like we, what we've learned, we either improve on and and continue or keep searching. And I'm just impressed with the grants, with the, with what Kelly's doing at the foundation, the buildings. And the fact that everyone seems to work very well together. Communication's good. And I appreciate you taking time every month to do the the meetings. It's a lot of time out of your day, so, but I just want to say thank you and the work that you're doing, the the statistics you're coming up with is I mean, it's just it's statistics that you can, we can take, you all can take and keep improving. So I mean, you guys are getting better and better every time, so thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate his comments. Trustee, how?
I I have to pretty much say the same thing, the stats that were, we were shown today, and that would get shown pretty much every time we show up. We're very fortunate to have a group of individuals that have a pride ownership in their work. Not only their work, but their work ethic and those around them. I think that's imperative to having a successful organization or a college, you know, and what we are here to do. We're here to develop skills, knowledge, and we have a very diverse community that we are continually recognizing and through a variety of ways. And I think that's equally as important. It's enthusiastic. It's exciting. I mean, it's publishable, all of this information that you have. And noteworthy, our surrounding communities need to understand the potential every, every one of their kindergarteners, for what they can become and where they can go in their lives. And if we can help them understand some of that potential, whatever it may be, and an idea about it, that's that's our gift back to the community. And that's where we can help our school districts, and I think that's an important prerogative that I would see. Congratulations. We're, we're, we're mostly through this crazy period of time, but you know, we we probably still have a road to hoe. And I think we have the strength to do it. We have to hide behind these masks for a while longer, probably, and certainly we won't fly on planes without one. Ever again, I don't think, you know, think of all the less, a lot, a lot less flus that occurred last year because of these, you know. People weren't just as sick. We had, unfortunately, had a deaths, but they weren't as sick. So thank you again for what you do. It's inspirational for a board member.
Thank you much.
I I would just, of course, second everything that Heidi and Mark have said. I mean, I leave every meeting thinking, oh, my God, what a wonderful crew, what a wonderful institution. What a great job you all do. And I sometimes, I guess, sort of have the feeling that, eh, you know, it's getting to be old hat. I mean, good grief, though, you know, big deal. But I'm always amazed. Everything is better. Everything is improved. It, I just, every meeting, I just am so proud to be a part of this this institution. And I'll tell you right now, it's coming to an end, and I'm sad. So again, what a wonderful group. Thank you, Mark. And and incidentally, the first question, you know, in that little section, why was, did we learn anything?
Well, you all have an opportunity to say that. All right. Thank you, Dr. Pearson. Yeah, and I would echo what's been said here certainly, but I too, I'm I'm extremely proud to be a part of this institution. I'm I'm amazed at every meeting when I come here to hear what you've done since the last meeting. And what you've done since our last meeting this time is extraordinary. Of course, it's been a longer period of time, but my gosh, all the work you've done on top of getting through this pandemic. And, you know, done that in remarkable fashion. Ames Community College is becoming more and more known as a leader amongst community colleges. For that, we have all of you to thank. And we appreciate it, so I can't say enough. And though she's not here, Dr. Bornstein needs to be reminded as well and and commended for her leadership in in making all this happen. She is definitely a remarkable leader and great for Ames College. I think you all enjoy her and enjoy working with her in order to I'll always say you demonstrate that the jobs you all do, so it's it's a great effort. We're fortunate to have you, so I appreciate it. Next, okay, Ray, what did we learn? It not have been worse today.
That was pretty good. You took it your own there.
Put some emphasis on it, I wonder.
We recorded that too.
Sorry about that.
Okay. What did we learn, Ray?
Oh, Lord, everything. I mean, it's just as usual, I already said it, but learn something new all the time. You know, we certainly were well prepared. I that's something else that I think is just great to know the reports we get and the printouts and so on. We'll get a chance to take a look at them in the beginning. I mean, just to have a lot of information at our fingertips to wherever we have questions and go, you know, thoroughly understand something, what you get a chance to ask, so. Yeah.
Great meeting again. So okay, what did we learn? What worked, what didn't work? Did we focus on oversight strategy? Yeah, we did challenges, certainly. Did we receive the information we needed to have an effective conversation? I don't think we have any any problems there, certainly. And did everyone have an opportunity to speak? We do very well there. I think back on what we did learn, I'd like to make a comment. I think we learned that we are doing everything pretty doggone well, and I think we get that emphasized at every meeting. And so I think we've learned that, boy, as long as things are going in the direction we got, we're probably on a good path, we probably ought to keep going there. Anyway, anything else to add to any of that?
I'd just add one more comment, and a lot of, we get all this information, and we get you know, just a lot of stuff to prepare us for a meeting. And there's one person that's responsible for that. That's that lady over there in the gray, and she just does a coordinated, put it all together, make sure it's on time and all that kind of stuff.
Yes, yep, yep.
Yeah, well, you know, I couldn't do it without all these people, so thank you for that, though, from everybody.
And Megan, thank you. All righty. Well, next is executive session is allowed by Colorado Revised Statute twenty four days, six dash four oh two. Therefore, parent B, the board will adjourn into executive session to receive legal advice. So I don't know, where were we going to do that? In the other room, Carrie, or we say we're going into the other room?
Adjourn here?
Pardon me?
Do we want to adjourn from here?
No, we just said that we're going into the other room.
Then come back.
And we adjourn, we adjourn both when we finish this.
Oh, oh, afterwards, we're talking about afterwards. No, yeah, we can adjourn in there.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna adjourn in there.
Not everybody, but it was the state.
There will be no, there will be no decisions made. This is for legal advice only, so. With that, we will adjourn, you know, we need a motion, I'm sorry.
I'll motion that.
You can, you, I'll second it, but you can do it yourself.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to executive session.